Good evening, it's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation. Who's doing our invocation this evening? Councilmember Testerman will lead us with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Smith. Please rise as you're able.
Please bow your heads. Today, let us be instruments of peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Please grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, and it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. May we always be reminded of how fortunate we are to serve and to give our best today and always. Amen.
Would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Testerman?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
With eight of nine councilmembers present, we'll move forward with item four. Is there a motion on the minutes from June 27th?
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to postpone for two weeks, 11A.
Okay, can you give the date? Don't we usually have to say the date? Okay. Is there a motion? The motion being made to postpone for two weeks?
To the next council meeting.
To the next council meeting. Item 11A, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to postpone item 11A has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other items to be postponed? Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to postpone items 12C, D, and E until the next council meeting, please.
Okay, there's been a motion to postpone for two weeks, items 12B, C, and D?
C, D, and E.
C, D, E.
Oh, C, D, E.
Uh huh.
Sorry, C, D, and E. Motion to postpone's been made by Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any other items to be postponed? Are there any items requested to be added by motion? Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a, to post, to pose a motion to add the resolution that we see before council now, that is in regards to the National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Grant Opportunity Program. This would be, as you can see in front of you, a copy that is attached that would allow us to be able to apply for and accept a grant if awarded in the amount of $15,000 with no required local match from the cities, and this was requested by the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force through Community Safety and Empowerment.
Okay, motion has been made to add an item to tonight's agenda. It's before you. Everyone, okay, everyone has a copy before them? Okay. The motion has been made and seconded, and just for clarity, we would have that on the agenda, item 11I. Is that okay? Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other items requested to be added by motion? Councilmember McKenzie, you're, okay. Are there any consent items? No. Okay, moving right along to my report. First of all, I know some of you had an opportunity to go down to the festival on the fourth, down in World's Fair Park. It was a really happy occasion. There were thousands of people, tons of families out enjoying the celebration, and just everyone was having a really good time, and the fireworks were amazing. But it was hours of fun, it was free, it was a really diverse, a diverse group of people, and just so many families. I really enjoyed spending time down there, and I know those of you had the opportunity to do so, enjoyed it as well. And of course, the symphony is always a pleasure to enjoy their recitals as well. I did want to just say that, you know, thanks to our special events teams, the public service crews, KPD, KFD, and the entire city employees who made that possible, because it's a holiday for everybody down there, but it takes a lot of people working that holiday to make it so much fun, so thank you. Tomorrow, I'd like to invite councilmembers to a ribbon cutting. This will celebrate another successful use of the city's facade improvement program. This program provides support to improve the facades of commercial buildings in order to improve their appearance and to leverage private investment. So tomorrow, Pat Dome Productions will hold a ribbon cutting at 949 North Broadway. This is at Broadway and Caswell Avenue. This is the latest of dozens of facade projects implemented on this stretch of Broadway since the program's launched in 2006. So that program's really been transformational for many properties throughout the city, so please come and enjoy the celebration tomorrow, 2:00 PM, 949 North Broadway. There's another fun event coming on Saturday. It's a special rededication of the War Dog Memorial. This 25th anniversary celebration will honor the history of working dogs with stories from handlers, a wreath laying, and a 21-gun salute. This memorial honors war dogs who saved hundreds of Marines' lives in World War II. This ceremony's at the University of Tennessee College of Veterinary Medicine, and that's this Saturday, 10:00 AM. So please come join us if you can. So now, the rules of decorum. Just a reminder, those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with the city recorder ahead of time. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for respecting these rules, and that does it for my mayor's report. Are there reports from councilmembers? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I know that Councilmember Parker had a birthday, so just wanted to say happy birthday.
Okay, thank you. Happy birthday. Any other reports from councilmembers? Okay. Then we'll move right on to the rest of the agenda.
8A is a resolution confirming the appointments of Cynthia Dietl and Sadiya Williams to the Police Advisory and Review Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter 22.5, Articles 1 and 2, to implement updates for land development.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Appendix B, Zoning Code, Article 17.3.1, Non-Conforming Lot of Record, to provide clarity with respect to development on lots created by deed, and to provide additional flexibility in limited situations upon approval by the Department of Engineering, and to Article 2.3 definitions, relocating the definition of lot of record from Article 17.3 to Article 2.3, City of Knoxville applicant.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,000 from the community empowerment budget and donating same to Canvas Can Do Miracles to support summer arts programming and an end-of-course exhibit for opportunity youth.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution respectfully requesting?
That's been postponed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Apologies.
No problem.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform to provide technical assistance and training for group violence reduction strategies for the city and community partners in an amount not to exceed $307,050. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. We do have one person signed up to speak to this item. Ms. Evry, if you want to come to the podium, you have up to five minutes.
Constance Evry, 37914. I guess they're gonna put the timer up. So yes, I'm here to speak to the concerns around our violence interruption program and the lack of transparency, but more importantly, it's been a year, and we're not seeing the productive results of actual success. We all know about the YMCA incident that happened where the young man brought a gun to the facility and shot a fellow community member, a young youth. And the concern that we see in this is that I immediately asked the question, which was, where was the violence interruption? I think it's concerned, because we just had an establishment called Bebo's close due to 68 incidents that included infractions of murder happening at the site, and members of the Violence Interruption Program also work as security at Bebo's. So we're confused now. What does the Violence Interruption Program actually do, Knoxville? Are they security? Are they deputies of the police department? Are they violence interrupters? It is not even clear exactly who these people are, because if you're a violence interrupter, we want to identify you, so that when there are situations happening in the community, we can go to our trusted partners and let them know the issue, so they can actually interrupt. That's the program, to interrupt. But you got inexperienced people on the team in the first place. You know, the real model that you want to use and best practices, just like the crisis response with HART, it does not involve partnerships with the police, because there's a trustworthy factor and a damage to the relationship between the community and the police. So this is the alternative response. And so we're supposed to use response that is community-based, meaning you want to use retired members of the gang life and the street life to be the leaderships and the guides on how we appropriately address this concern, because they know what it looks like, they know what it lives like, they know how it moves, they know how it breathes, because they literally were these people. And so these, once again, continue to show how you are, one, don't listen to us, and two, continue to follow the worst practice models, not the best practice models, especially from black leadership nationally, black educators who give us the blueprint. That's who you follow, because they know best. You know why? Because they look like the people we're talking about. And this is why we continue to not be successful in our programming. Look, Kayla Middlebrook said out loud that there will not be any metrics of standards of success being kept. Well, how do we know how we're keeping a successful program if we're not measuring success? From day one, we asked, what are the metrics? What are the standards? What are the models? What are the baseline bottom ideals? And you all have never given us that, but when it came to HART, y'all scrutinized it, ripped it apart, hijacked it, came with goofy resolutions and additions that don't even matter, because it's about how we're going to intervene, a different format of a plan to address crises in our community, not about psychiatric wars, because if you really cared, Andrew, you would have been advocating for that. You never brought up a psychiatric war until a million HARTs started talking about that. So let's be for real. And so this is why I continue to say that Knoxville, you need to pay attention to the people who are profiting from your pain. One of the members of this team has already been killed. How many more y'all gonna sacrifice while you say, let's do something different, especially when it comes to preservation of life? These programs are supposed to preserve life, and we're not seeing that. And more importantly, no one asked the most critical question about the young man. Why does a child who lives less than two to three blocks from the rec center in his community, that's supposed to be considered a safe space, felt the need to carry not one gun, but two guns? What is going on in Knoxville streets that children are carrying two guns to the safest place, the rec center? Come on, adults, adult people, and black people, you must do better. You cannot push these initiatives forward in our communities behind black, I mean, it's like behind white thoughts and white ideals, knowing they don't know what's going on in our communities, knowing they don't know what we have to live through, knowing that they don't know our people like we do. You have to take those leadership ranks. You have to lead from the forefront, because it's about saving our children. We saw how they can preserve their children's lives. What happened to the kid at West High School? He's alive. What happened to the Rook King Killer? He's alive. What happened to the kid at Gibbs High School? He's alive. But you know who's not alive? Anthony Thompson Jr. And there are factors to that. East Knoxville, the gun zone. He had several classmates already killed, and then we have a police who's so irresponsible in de-escalation when it comes to black people, that they went in there and killed him instead. This is what this was supposed to be bringing to our table, and I have not seen successful metric, I have not seen successful data, and I have not seen a successful model come out of this program. And this is why I am running for office, Knoxville. Once again, we must do it better. We have to do it better. We cannot keep sacrificing our community, our members, and our children, and more importantly, we need leadership that understands the needs of our communities and our people. So for the last and final time, Knoxville, you better vote Constance Evry. I yield my time.
Okay, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. Councilmember Parker, and then Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we get an overview of the, I guess, program intended to be funded by this?
Yes, Ms. Middlebrook?
Yes. So as outlined in the proposal, it is not a singular program. What NICJR helps to support is the development and implementation of what we hear locally of calling group violence reduction strategies. In some places, it's called Gun Violence Reduction Strategy, or Cease Fire is a branded term for it, and what it involves is a number of things. And so some of the things that NICJR will provide technical assistance and training in the space of, it's going to be a lot of technical assistance and support for our office and our staffs in terms of how we are setting metrics and measuring success of programs, both our implemented programs and community-based programs that we are supporting, how we are reporting that out. One critical piece that will be a very early step for us, that we have been really excited to start, is the shooter reviews. And so there's a particular science around designing those shooter reviews, which involve reviews of incidents typically in communities. They can happen weekly or bi-weekly, based on the frequency of incidents, implementing shooting reviews in our community and designing what that process looks like. So it can be very technical, and so they have done this in a number of communities, and they will help us in setting those up in the very near term. They also will be providing and working with us and our community partners on a landscape analysis that helps us identify what our existing resources are and where there may be additional gaps, and how we may adjust resources that currently exist, or where we may need to help build capacity for building out additional resources, to help engage the individuals who are at highest risk of participating in violence. And that is kind of the undercurrent and the key piece of this work, is that it is hyper-focused on those groups and/or individuals that are at highest risk of participating in violence. And so it's not designed to be a broad sweeping engagement. So in addition to that, also helping to support the development of our direct engagement with those individuals and what that process looks like, whether it's helping to design call-ins or custom notifications. And then working, I think you will see in there, there's information about some of the training curriculums that they have and the support that they have for developing case management and life coaching that is specifically tailored to the individuals that we are trying to reach, those individuals who are at highest risk of participating in violence, and providing training for community partners in implementing those strategies, so that as we are engaging folks, to provide them with the opportunity, hopefully to make different choices, that there is actually resources that we can connect them to, because it's not helpful to say to people, we want to help you, and then you have nothing to get, offer them. But then also, in addition to that, there are some training pieces for our police department around engaging with how to focus their efforts on actually reducing gun violence, prioritizing gun violence, and deprioritizing minor offenses, so that we actually have the impact that we want to see. And so there are a number of, there are a few other things, I think, in there as well, but there are a number of services that this particular organization provides, and we are excited for the opportunity to have them work with us. As you can see in their proposal, they've worked with a number of organizations throughout the country. They are a black-led organization that is nationally recognized and is well-established in this work, and so we're excited to have the opportunity to work with them.
Thank you, Ms. Middlebrook. Councilmember Parker?
I do have my questions, but I know that my time's run out, so I can...
Okay, we'll come back to you. Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Middlebrook?
Yes.
You know, I think that, I guess what I wanted to get at was whether or not this is an evidence-based, data-driven process that you're looking at, and how it engages community members in addressing violence and intervention in that. Could you maybe go into some detail for us on that?
Yeah, so GPRS is an evidence-based strategy. It's widely recognized and accepted as a key strategy that sees significant results when implemented well over time, and that's part of the reason why we are bringing this contract forward, because I think it's important for us to start correctly, right, and to work with those who know how to do it and know how to do it well, and have had success implementing this over the span of years in a number of communities. And so it is a strategy that comes highly recommended from any number of experts in the field with regards to having long-term sustained success with decreasing the number of violent incidents, most specifically shootings with injuries and homicides. And so that approach is something that, again, relies heavily on data, and as you can see in the proposal, there is a heavy focus on data, on record management, on how you are developing and measuring success of programs, and these are strategies, again, that have been implemented across the country with success. And, you know, for us, especially in our community, as a city, we rely on community partners to implement a lot of the social services. We do not have a social services department here in the city. We do not, we're not a health department, we're not a social services department. And so we heavily rely on our community partners to be able to provide these services, and what we are best equipped is to provide the technical assistance, the training, and, you know, capacity building for them to be able to do that work and do that work well. And NICJR has a strong history of engaging those community partners to identify what their needs are, to train them directly, and provide additional supports, and to provide feedback from those organizations also, and those community partners, in terms of other directions of the program, and so they have a strong history of doing that work.
Okay. And so are we talking about having community partners address the needs of those that are likely to participate in violence, so they can make an alternate choice?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Testerman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious if you could, if there are any other examples of sort of what those metrics are, just a little deeper dive on what are those metrics for success? I mean, I know what the ultimate is, but...
Yeah, I mean, so it varies, community to community, based on what their program structure is, and like I said, NICJR will work with us to develop what our specific program looks like. The most obvious metric is reduction in homicide and shooting incidents. They, a lot of times, we also measure for the individuals who are at highest risk of participating in violence, recidivism, and whether or not they are re-offending or coming into contact with criminal systems again, for individuals who are actually participating in programming, whether or not they are achieving identified goals that they have set for themselves and with program support that would reduce the likelihood of them participating in violence. So there are a range of metrics that, you know, we could identify and measure, but the ultimate goal is to have those reductions in homicides and non-fatal shootings.
Thank you. Also, Chief Noel, I just would love to hear your thoughts on this and support and what you're familiar with.
Sure, so I've been fully behind this from day one. It's actually something I spoke to the mayor about, you know, as soon as that was brought on board, and Director Middlebrook and I have been really working hand-in-hand with this, and I've seen this work in other places, like the research speaks for itself. We are really excited to continue to embark on this process, not only with the shooting reviews, but also working as much as we can to, you know, identify individuals that hopefully we can steer away from a life of violence. So I think this has tremendous, tremendous potential, and I think this is absolutely the best direction for us to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, we received, Director Middlebrook, we received the Gun Violence Analysis Summary over the past three years, I think?
Correct.
This seems to me as kind of an action plan to act upon that research. Is that a fair assumption?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a planned development and programming action to respond to that data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues in our packet, starting on page 162, there are some examples of different jurisdictions that this program and this group has been involved with. Indianapolis, it talks about some of the results. Portland, Oregon, Oakland, California specifically. This is where the Oakland Cease Fire, actually, organization was founded as a result of this. They saw a primary cause of a 50% reduction in injury shootings and homicides in Oakland over the course of six years, which was an outcome that was verified, Washington DC and some others. And so I would encourage us to maybe take a look, and there's some additional information there, and then also some references further back in our packet from different public officials from each of these states in support of this, this organization and group that's proposed that we entered to this contract with. So they, they have some proven successes and strategies, and I like the fact that they are also open to working with the training with other nonprofits in the community that are, that are also doing this work, to help prepare them and working together to see a difference. But we definitely have to do something where we are equipping people and organizations that are out there on the front line to be able to handle these different scenarios and situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I was a little surprised to see this in our packet, because since day one of starting the violence intervention work, my concern with the description of the street outreach work is that it was taking on a group violence interruption strategy. And now, as I hear a description of this program and this potential training, I feel like it's blurring the lines between what would be the work that would come out of this training, and what would be the work of a street outreach program. And I agree with Ms. Middlebrook that it's, it's important that programs like these are rolled out correctly and implemented in the right way. Community trust is a big factor in that. And when there's a lack of clarity around the roles of various community-based groups in this work, I think it can hurt our ability to have good outcomes. Oakland is actually a really good example, and I, I don't have their full history in front of me right now, but if you look at the history of the Oakland Cease Fire program, it had a lot of starts and stops over several years. And part of that had to do with how the community was responding to the program and the ability to work with the program. But those cities who've had success with these violence interruption programs, which I have a familiarity with, with my background in violence interruption work, there has to be a distinction between the street outreach work and the group violence interruption work. And right now, there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of conversations happening that aren't, the broader community aren't privy to, some leaders in the community aren't even leader to, privy to, and I'm worried about how we are rolling out and implementing these programs, and who we intend to... we intend to even involve in this new initiative being brought before us. If, obviously, it was just announced, this was my birthday weekend, I did not have time to meet with Ms. Middlebrook before our meeting today, so I'm unsure on whether I want to abstain or vote against it, because implemented correctly, this could be a good program for But implemented incorrectly, it could do more damage. Because even in our conversation today, what we're not hearing, we're hearing, oh, we're going to get a lot of support, we're going to get training. But what it drills down to is this is the carrot and the stick strategy. This is the strategy where we go out to the communities and we say, you either take our help, or there will be consequences. And that is, there's a step before that, right? That's supposed to be the street outreach, where we have violence interrupters who are in the community who are connecting those at risk with resources that can prevent violence in our community, that we're interrupting it before violence happens. But the carrot and the stick approach is much different, and we want to make sure that the community-based groups who are connecting individuals with resources and who are trying to save so many youth in our community from going down certain paths, that they're able to work separate from these other pieces of work so that they can maintain that trust in the community and be effective in the work that they do in the community. And any sort of carrot and the stick strategy, it needs to be clear who's wielding that strategy and how it's being implemented. The lack of clarity concerns me.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Councilmembers, I would just say, one of the reasons we are hoping you'll approve this contract tonight is so that we have the benefit of these consultants who've done this, who have, you know, walked this path before, who've experienced some pitfalls and can help us do it right, including the distinction between group violence reduction strategy and street outreach. They are distinct, and this group is going to help us do it right for Knoxville, too. Ms. Middlebrook, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I would just add that, so GBRS is a distinct strategy. Street violence interruption is also a distinct strategy. As with a lot of programming, sometimes there are opportunities for those things to interface, but they do operate distinctly. And the street outreach teams are really, they serve multiple purposes, but their primary focus is around interrupting incidents that may happen in the immediate term, de-escalating those conflicts, and where the opportunity exists to connect those folks to services. GBRS is also an opportunity to connect individuals to services. And the enforcement piece is not if they don't take services, then there's enforcement. It's if you continue to participate in violence. So somebody may not take services, but they also may not continue to participate in violence. And at that point, they are not a high priority in terms of some of the enforcement pieces. And so this gives us multiple pathways to engage those individuals, because I think the important thing is that it doesn't have to be, nor does it need to be, either or. We can do some and. And so this gives us another opportunity to have a tool and a resource that is highly recommended, that is evidence-based, that is community-informed, that is humanity-centered, and to do that with an entity and an organization that is a premier entity in doing this work. This opportunity to work with NICJR does not happen for most cities. It does not. And I am super excited about the opportunity to work with them. They are a well-established organization. They are highly revered. They have worked with, I mean, you see in the packet, some of the cities that they have worked with, that is the tip of the iceberg of some of the cities that they have worked with and continue to work with. And so I think that we are well-positioned to do this work, to do it well, and to have a great impact on our community. And I would like to have as many tools as possible in our tool belt, and I don't think that it has to be either or.
Thank you, Director Middlebrook. Councilmembers, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
Motion carries with one abstention and seven in favor. Is that right? Okay. Thank you very much.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Wildlands Engineering Incorporated to provide professional engineering design services for the Rock City Park Stream Stabilization Project for an amount not to exceed $148,790 funded by the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a multimodal access grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation in an amount of $1,125,000, with a city match of $125,000, for a total grant amount of $1,250,000 to construct a sidewalk along North Broadway.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I just want to say, particularly since Councilmember Ryder isn't here, this is one of the sidewalk areas that's most heavily rated as needed, you know, given the number of pedestrians in the area and the safety challenges in this crossing. So I just wanted to say that I'm sure she would be pleased if this is supported. I also just want to thank the Engineering Department for always looking for funding opportunities to enhance pedestrian safety, because we have a lot of walkers and we want them to be safe as they traverse our city. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing acquisition by condemnation necessary of a fee simple interest in certain property located 205 Spruce Street, believed to be owned by Warren E. Hodge, deceased, at an estimated cost of $77,800, as recommended by the Abandoned, Blighted, and Vacant Properties Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation and the Federal Transit Administration to provide funding in the amount of $1,500 to Knoxville Area Transit for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement, grant assistance with a city match of up to $375,000 to purchase electric buses and related charging infrastructure for a total grant amount of $1,875,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you, Mayor. This is not necessarily directed at this, but we have three CAT grants right in a row, and looks like if we get them all, it would be a million dollars in matching funds from the city if we were awarded all three of these. I just would like to hear from the Finance Director that we've got that, that's budgeted for, we don't have to go out and have a raffle to pay for it or something.
Ma'am, Boyce Evans, CFO for the city, actually, this one and the next two, those dollars would be budgeted in FY '25. Do we have the money now? Yes, we do.
Okay.
We anticipate having in FY '25, and we calculate this right now. I mean, I've got a running spreadsheet that my folks keep for me, and we update it all the time. I don't anticipate any problems with that.
Thank you. I just thought that was a good fiduciary question to ask, because I hope we get them all, but that's a lot of money in matching dollars if we get it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Testerman?
Thank you. And Councilmember Fugit, you took the words right out of my mouth, except I was going to ask in three more. But, Mr. Boyce, I was just curious, I mean, again, and with other matches, I mean, we do this quite often, I just can't remember the amount allocated for this fiscal year on grant match dollars that we had.
I don't remember the total amount allocated for this FY either, off the top of my head. I can get that back out to everybody, but we have a lot, the general practice is if you don't know about them well in advance, you don't budget for them, you take them as they come up. But like the FTA grants, for instance, for CAT, we know a lot of those way out there in advance, which is a good thing. But I don't know the specific amount off the top of my head. I know everything that is due this FY has been budgeted for this FY.
Okay. I just was curious, we're only, not even through the first month of the new fiscal year, so that just, I thought about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Testerman, is your light off? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Federal Transit Administration and the Tennessee Department of Transportation to provide funding in the amount of $1,44,924 to Knoxville Area Transit pursuant to the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act Highway Infrastructure Programs, which requires a city match of up to $261,231 for a total grant amount of $1,306,155.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Federal Transit Administration and the Tennessee Department of Transportation to provide funding in the amount of $2,331,077 to Knoxville Area Transit pursuant to the Local Surface Transportation Block Grant Program with a city match of up to $582,769 for a total grant amount of $2,913,846. Sorry, $2,913,846.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance...
Wait, we'll go to 11I? This NLC resolution? I'm not sure, you know, if you guys have it before you. This was added by motion at the beginning of the agenda. Does everyone have a copy of it? You want to maybe read it into the record, please?
11I is a resolution of the Council of the City of Knoxville authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of up to $15,000 with no required local match from the National League of Cities under the Advancing Economic Mobility Grant Opportunity Program. Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance to close the portion of Ekers Road fronting parcel 109 GE 029 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners, Lisa Oliver, applicant, 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance to close the portion of Riverside Drive from the southwest corner of parcel 09601104 to where it meets Crest Road, and to close Crest Road in its entirety and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the property owner, adjacent property owners, University of Tennessee, applicant, 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12F is an ordinance to change the base zone classification for property located at 1909 and 1915 Hoyt Avenue from RN 2 District to RN 4 District, Zachary Tetley Nexus Partners LLC, applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12G is an ordinance to change the base zone classification, zoning classification for property located at 3705 Valley View Drive from RN 1 District to RN 3 District, Juan Hernandez, applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12H is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 1902 Forest Avenue from O District to RN 6 District, Gordon Smith, applicant, 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12I is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 0 Sterky Street from IG District to IMU District, Franco Iaracosi, applicant, 3rd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12J is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 0 and 112 Shipman Drive from RN 4 District to O District, David Buckner, applicant, 5th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmembers, we have five people signed up to speak at public forum. We'll start with an order that they signed up. The first person is Dorothea Taylor. Ms. Taylor, are you present? Oh, okay. If you could please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
My name is Doritha Taylor.
Oh, my apologies.
Oh, you're fine. And first, I would like to thank you for enabling me to have the opportunity to speak to y'all this evening. First, I want to give you a little background of myself, so you understand when I finish talking. So, my name is Doritha Taylor, and I have been in Knoxville for 56 years. And my background is I have over 25 years' experience with working with children. I have worked as assistant teacher at Kristen Berry for some couple of years, dealing with behavior issues. Also, I have over 25 years working with children in a church atmosphere. Also, I am associated with, first, my organization, my nonprofit, is Axies to Glory. Axies to Glory was legal this year, but I have been operating on my own, with my own funds, since 2014, when I and my family barely escaped the house fire. Within seconds, we are blessed to be alive. So I have created Axies to Glory because I wanted people to have the resources that they needed, because as I went through this tragedy and trauma, I realized that the resources that people needed wasn't out there. So that's why I started that. Also, I am partners with Divine Urban Expression, Community Cultural Arts. I am also with Canvas Can Do Miracles, also Non-Hit Women of Vision. Also, yes. So I'm also affiliated with a lot, and I work in the community. The reason I'm here, also, since 2014, I am alumni of Fulton High School in 1984, and in 1980, I mean, yeah, that's when I graduated. In 2014, on, when Zabion, when it happened, and we experienced a lot of tragedy from, I think, the year 2014 on up, my children was affected. So I have been in the city school systems trying to make a difference. And the reason I'm here is because I want to give you a different aspect and some different suggestions. First, I really want to commend you for the work that you are doing in Knoxville. But I feel that if we look back at 2014 to now, we still have the same ongoing problems. So I am here to tell, I mean, I'm here to ask you and to give you a different thought process, because if you keep, we have, keep having the ongoing problems, so we need... Because if you keep, we have, keep having the ongoing problems, so we need different solutions. So I'm here to express that, when you think about the funding, you would think about, when you give it to one organization or you give it to two organizations, just make sure, I just want you to make sure that they are working together in the community with everybody else that's doing the work. Because there's a lot of us that are doing the work, that we don't have nothing to gain, but we are passionate about our kids and want our kids to succeed. Because the drama does affect the kids, it affects the parents, it affects everybody in the community. And if we work together, I think we can succeed, but we have, I just want you to make sure that the ones that are getting the grants, make sure that everybody is included to work together, so we can come up with positive solutions to these ongoing problems. And make sure you include the parents and the children, because they are what has been, they are who is being affected. So when you think about the granting and you think about who you're giving it to, just make sure that you walk along with them, because we have to come together. Because what we've been doing is not working, not saying that you haven't made the pact on the city in Knoxville, but I believe there's always room for improvement. And as you will hear fellow people that I have worked with organizations, you would hear some more suggestions on how to work together to make a difference in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Audrey Wallace. Ms. Wallace, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Hi. My name is Ms. Audrey Wallace. I am with Creative Community Cultural Arts. I am the owner. I am a nonprofit here in Knoxville. And working with youth in Knoxville is very pleasing. I love to see all of them happy. I mentor through the arts. And one thing with being a nonprofit is being underfunded. So I just want you to think about when you're doing your decisions on funding, just think about the grassroots organizations out here. We've been out here for a long time doing work, and we like what we do, we just need help along the way as well, as the larger organizations. So that's all I wanted to say, that. Just remember that small organizations need help as well. And thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Felicia Outsi, Ms. Outsi? Outsi, sorry.
First, I want to say woo-sah. I don't want to get up here and, just want to say, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Felicia Outsi, and my zip code is 37914, and I've been in Knoxville for possibly 18 years as of February of this year. But I just want to say, I'm with Divine Urban Expressions, Love is the Answer, and those two ladies that just came up. We actually comprise an alliance on our own, but we've been doing this for the past at least eight or nine years, and it has been in direct response to a lot of the young people who have lost their lives. And I can name so many of them, Taman Stapleton, Elijah One Stewart, and even just now, we just lost Jamariyan Chambers, and some of those were the kids that helped me to start Love is the Answer. I've been speaking, on occasion, I sit back and I watch, and I will not yell at you, because I understand what it is about, what we are going through. But we, we thank you for listening to the small people who look like we're not making a big difference, but we are the ones on the front lines. I can name several young men who are not dead, but they are in prison, but still, because they didn't die doesn't mean anything. So the violence is the problem, but also the lack of social, emotional support. So I urge you to consider any type of funding that you may come across, and we will be talking to you preferably in the next couple of months, we can see that you approve grants. And we, on behalf of Canvas Can Do Miracles, want to thank you for approving that. But we will be working, hopefully, with someone in the city to apply for grants. That will include us being able to not just continue to reach out to the young people to prevent violence, but to their mothers and their fathers, who you guys have not mentioned yet, when you talk about violence prevention. You have not mentioned yet the lack of support when it comes to trauma, and also helping kids to know how to respond when their friend is shot. That could actually save a life. You want to employ or get people out the streets, the best thing to do is reach out to the kids who have lost mothers and fathers over the past 15 years. They are now 25 years old, they are older now, and most of them are the ones perpetuating the violence. So I urge you to continue to listen to our voices. Don't think because we're not yelling at you that we are not passionate about it, and that because we're not able to come to every meeting, we really are still trying to reach the kids that we are able to reach. There are many of us who lack space. I don't know how many times people have come to you and said, if you can just get together a building that you can allow us in, I'm talking about after hours. I know you have the Boards and Girls Club, I know you have Emerald Youth, but those places close around 6 o'clock. I know you have schools, and you have after-school programs, but you must consider those of us who are there after hours. So we will be coming to you. We know there are lots of grants that we probably need to look for, but we thank you for taking those into consideration and even helping us as we build capacity. If there's something that we're missing, stop turning us down and give someone to us to help us to get where we need to continue to help you, so that we all can work as a unit. But I just want to say, thank you for the love. I've been hearing that word thrown around a lot, but it includes patience and tolerance and listening to everybody involved. All right, well, that's all I got to say. I yield my time. God bless, have a blessed day. Oh, plus, I've been reading that Tennessee has gone to the dogs, literally. So if you're going to give and allow space for the dogs, please allow space for those of us who are working directly with youth and families. That's all I got to say. One love.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Jackie Holloway. Is Ms. Holloway here?
Welcome. Have a good day.
Okay. Next, last speaker signed up to speak is William Mendoza. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is William Mendoza, 2442 Brown Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee. I just come here to talk about an intersection close to my community, and, which is the intersection of Whittle Springs and Washington Pike. What's around there is Alice Bell, wait, Bell Morris, Bell Morris, La Esperanza, there's a fire station, and I want to talk about the intersection there, which is kind of dangerous when you're there. And when you're walking, not walking, but when you're driving through the Washington Pike part, the Whittle Springs part, in the stoplight, if the person is going straight, the one on the left, and it's on a green light, they have to wait till the one on the, that's going straight, to go straight till they go left. So when you do it at the same time, there's, there's a cause that you can, car crash or anything can happen, and actually, I've personally, not a car crash, but you know, been close to it. But you know, and a lot of other people that I've talked to in our neighborhood are also looking about it. And when you go left, even when there's no cars around, you still have to take part of the sidewalk to drive all the way to left part, because there's a car there, and you can hit them. So I feel like, I don't know if the city can do something about it, or what it could be done, but there has been many causes of other people, my family, people in the community that have, almost have a car crash there, stuff like that. So I want to know, what can the city do? But I also know that the city has a lot of other stuff to do, but I wanted to know if the city can do anything or not about that. So, yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll come speak to you at the conclusion of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Council members, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.